So hi, everyone. I see it's four o'clock, so I'm going to call this November 9th, 2020 meeting of the Select Board to order and ask that the clerk call the role, please.
Ms. Escudero?
Present.
Ms. Hotchkiss?
Present.
Mr. Johnson?
Present.
Ms. Ackerman?
Present.
And myself, Ms. Bates, present.
Thank you. Okay, the consent agenda reads today, Town Accountant Warren's dated November 5th, 2020.
Move to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Ms. Escudero?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
And myself, Ms. Bates, aye.
Okay, and that's unanimous, and I so declare. So the town managers' report.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Just a few quick things. I'm sure if you saw the news, I think on Friday, and it was cover of the weekend, the state has kind of changed the measuring stick on how they assess community risk levels. And they basically used, they started factoring for population. So we were in the green, we're now back into no color as in a very, as a very low-risk community, just by virtue of the change of the measuring stick. And I think the state was getting a lot of feedback over the past few weeks that if you don't, if you don't fix for population, somehow the numbers get skewed towards more populous towns. And the mapping started to look pretty ominous, where the red, the red communities were growing, you know, in number, week over week. And I think it was, I think the governor realized that just, it wasn't really sending a, a clear message. So just be mindful of that as you check further updates, that the methodology changed slightly over the weekend. Another important thing that's happening is the MBTA is having a discussion amongst its member communities about levels of service. I think it's pretty, it's well-reported, and I think it's fairly obvious that commuting levels are way off. Certainly, our commuter lots aren't being used the way they were pre-COVID. You know, Crosby's is, I think that space is, I'm told that space is empty most of the time. So they're engaging the communities in service-level changes. They did have a community survey that went out, but there's a meeting tomorrow at 6:00 PM via Zoom that will, where they'll discuss our service territory. So if you want to, the link, it can be found if you go to MBTA, the name of, the name of the engagement that they're doing is called Forging Ahead. And so if you follow the links, you'll see the community meeting schedule, and you can register for the meeting and join it on Zoom. And so we're, we'll be tracking that and see what those changes mean for us. We're going to be talking about the election in a minute, but I just wanted to report that every year, 3% of the districts of the precincts get randomly selected for an audit. And as Town Clerk Kari Tari noted, we were fortunate to win our spot in the audit this year. So that has been something that's, I don't, I don't think she'll be here tonight. I think that she's been focused on working on the audit. So it was for precinct two, but I just want to make sure it's clear that she is working, that precinct two got audited, but it is a random assignment audit, not a sign of any kind of reports of trouble or anything else. The fact I'm told that you can, that they were able to go on Zoom and watch them actually physically poll, you know, metaphorically names out of a hat to select the precincts for audit. So just wanted to let the board know that was happening. So a couple of quick things. We had a holiday shopping event on Saturday. It felt like a holiday shopping event for 4th of July, which was great, but it looked very well-attended. I haven't, I've only connected with Beth Williams, and she said she's gotten a lot of positive feedback from the business community. I know there were some that had concerns about Walden Street closing, but when I was down there, it seemed like, like I said, there was a large number of people on the street, and people really enjoying being out and getting in and out of stores. So I don't know if we'll do another one of those before the end of the year. I think we're looking at really getting ready, even though it's 70 degrees out, and we're talking about getting ready for snow operations. But as we know, that it's only a matter of time before we are back into that mode. So we'll be working with the business community to make sure they have a lot of advance notice on, on our next steps in terms of taking barriers back, you know, back in and, like I said, getting ready for snow operations. But if there are other ways, we can maybe do some, you know, drive-in style events. We may do that, but I'm not, we don't have anything on the, on the docket yet. And then the bi-annual community, the resident satisfaction survey is in the final stages of being drafted. And so that'll be going, that'll be published in the near future. We did, we kept most of the questions the same because we have kind of a thread of data that we want to continue to build on and be able to track. But we also did add a handful of questions about COVID-19 response by the town generally and departments specifically. One of, one of, I haven't obviously been here when this is done, but one of the things we really need to focus on is really increasing dramatically the online submissions and getting away from printed submissions for obvious reasons. And so I think that's one of the things, as we get, get ready to promulgate and promote the survey, there may be a change in approach from past years on that. I think that's pretty much all I have. Oh, and we did submit our, our sealed citizens petitions for the liquor licenses and the senior means exemption to our legislative delegation. And I don't know how much time they have left in the session for home rule petitions, but those are, are moving forward. And we will, we'll let you know as soon, we'll let you know as soon as we hear from the delegation if they think they're going to be able to get votes on them. Any questions?
All right. My chair's remarks are brief. I just want to thank the town clerk's office and all the registrar, board of registrars, and all the volunteer poll workers who helped execute the most recent election cycle here. And as we can hear from the town manager this morning, this afternoon, I should say, the beat still goes on. They still have some additional work to do. But a lot of thanks to everyone who made that possible. So originally, we were going to have the Police Chief O'Connor as a follow-up to talk about the, any community issues in terms of the election follow-up. It sounds like he's otherwise engaged. Is that correct, Stephen?
Yeah, I don't see him here. I think he is presently engaged. And I think, and we could have him come back another night. I guess I can give the short answer of it all, which is, things went very, very well. You know, it's actually when we were kind of chit-chatting a little bit before the start of the meeting, the event on the 4th was handled very well. And I think people really, you know, kept it cool and, and, you know, you know, used, used their vote to demonstrate, to express themselves. And like I said, I think it was, you know, the election day and the, and the ensuing days of count were, I guess, by and large, problem-free from a conflict standpoint. And even the, you said even the one event we had was, was handled very, very well, and the people behaved really admirably, given, I think, the, like I said in my message to the community, this is one of the most intense elections that I can recall, and I've been watching them for, you know, most of my adult life. So I think, like I said, Concord did itself proud in how it handled itself during a stressful time.
All right. Jane?
Do we have any sense of what our voter turnout was like?
Eighty-six percent, which is, that's, that's impressive. That is really impressive.
I wonder what that would, I mean, not that I expect anybody right now to know it. I would wonder how that compares to any other election. My guess is significantly.
She'll, I'm sure when she gets through, kind of, you know, when the dust settles a little bit, Kari will, I'm sure, will report on that. I mean, I think we do report, you know, annually, minimally in the annual town report, we do, I think, a few, a few-year look back on turnout. But I think Concord always has a high rate of turnout, but like the country, this year was a much higher, was higher than comparable years. You know, that's a, that's a really impressive thing.
Okay. So, okay, I think we're going to move on to the review of the Library Committee Administrative Code. And I'm wondering if Lindsay is here, not seeing her. Okay, let's leave that item for now. In case she shows up in a little while, we may have to come back to that item. Minuteman Technical Regional High School Plainfield Project and Assessment. I see Superintendent Buquian's here, and I think Stephen Ledoux, the Minuteman Board Representative, is also here. I know that time is tight with other meeting, competing meetings. So Superintendent Buquian, if you'd like to introduce this topic, that would be great.
Yeah, thanks for having me. Also with us is Bob Girardi, the Director of Finance for the district.
Welcome.
I, am I allowed to share? I have a very, like, four or five slides to bring people up to the date.
Yes, by all means.
Well, Ed, or Jeremy has the presentation. So if you wanted, our meeting manager can share, and you can just have him advance slides if you want.
Well, let me see. Can you see that?
Yes.
Okay. I shortened it a bit. So I'm hoping some of you have had a chance to visit the new school, although we haven't been open to visitors for about eight months. It is a pretty beautiful place. So just to bring you up to date, as we're going through the, the end of the building project with the MSBA, we're coming to that point in time where we had athletic fields in our plans. And originally, you'll see in the, we had a full build, which included three synthetic fields, a track, and tennis courts, all lit. We went through the permitting process in both Lincoln and in Lexington, and we've been fully approved by the planning boards, as well as the Conservation Commission, for the full build. But we, as we got to the end, we didn't have enough funds left over to do a full build, so we've reduced the scope. And the scope is really three synthetic fields with some alternates. And those alternates, I'll talk about in a second. But we're, the school committee at Minuteman voted back in June to move forward with the three synthetic fields, and we bid the alternates. And this is where we have the money from the project 4.1 million, our own revolving account, 615,000, and then from our stabilization account, 1.2 million. We anticipated the $5-point-million base bid project. Our bids came in less than that. And I'll talk about that in a second. But this was the base bid, the three fields, just a walking track, not a real full competition field and track track, but dugouts, bullpens. We had to provide for emergency drop-off and access, maintenance equipment, and some infrastructure that would allow us to move forward with the full build at some later date in time. The alternates that we bid, excuse me, was lighting for the three fields, a competitive running track for high school track and field, some equipment and fencing around all three fields. So that's what was bid, and we received, yeah, we received bids. And when we added up all the, and I can provide any of you more detail, and I provided the town managers this at a meeting we had last week. But if we wanted to do all of the alternates, we're short about $2 million, 1.9 to 2.1 million. The reason that we don't know exactly is because we're still closing out with the construction management firm under the MSBA processes. And there's a few hundred thousand dollars in there that we expect to get back to use towards the fields, but it's not 100%. So we didn't want to include them at this point. So after discussion with members of the school committee, the finance subcommittee at Minuteman, as well as town managers, the idea of trying to borrow that difference seemed to be the most sensible, especially given the favorable interest rates. We also did an analysis a few years back and had it updated about 10 months ago around the revenue projections for these three fields. We had our own estimates vetted by a company called Ballard and King out of Colorado. And they estimated that in year one, we'd generate about 350,000, about, once it was up and running, about 450,000. And as you may know, Minuteman has no fields right now, so we're spending money, or we would have been spending money, except in a COVID environment, going to rent other fields, transportation for our sports teams, because we haven't had a home game in three years. And that, we've been spending between 75 and 100,000 dollars a year. And so those would be avoided costs if we had our own facility. And then we have a pretty robust set of resources here at Minuteman in the new school, including a theater, not an auditorium, we have a theater, gymnasium, we have corporate meeting rooms here, which hold up to 180 guests, a restaurant. Obviously, all of that revenue has been paused for the last eight months based upon COVID. And this is the anticipated construction schedule. The contractor that we have is Heimlich out of Woburn, has agreed to hold the pricing on all of the alternates until the middle of January. But it would be, if we're able to move forward, and we are moving forward with the base bid, which has been awarded, you know, we're looking less than a year from now as being able to play on our own fields again. As some folks were wondering what the full build was, and what we're building is not going to be there. Basically, we're not building tennis courts or the lighting associated with it. We're not building stadia, seating, and we're not building a, what I call the fieldhouse, but it's not really a fieldhouse. It's a concession stand and kitchen facilities, as well as locker rooms and bathrooms, storage facilities. And, and that was, that's still in the plan, but we're not going to be going after that at this point. So that's briefly the, where we're at. So the school committee is meeting in about 10 days, or, yeah, two weeks from today, I think, while all the days are running together here. And they're going to be considering a vote to borrow those funds. And as part of a regional district, we have to have approval from all of our member towns, which we have nine member towns now. And that approval can be an affirmation vote at a town meeting, or it could be no action by a member town. And that vote by the school committee to borrow the funds would be approved by virtue of non-disapproval. We started the conversations with the town managers a few weeks ago, and actually, we started a few years ago. And now we're at the point where we've been encouraged by our member communities to kind of get this done now. You know, let's finish what we started. It's pretty easy to, it's pretty cheap money, I guess, is what we've been told. So I guess I'll have questions, Madam Chair, or if there's any other clarifications I can help with.
So it sounds like the meeting that was held with the town managers was really getting, one, exposing them to the presentation in terms of what you want to accomplish, but also getting a sense from them about their readiness to move forward on this, but that technically, this is a town meeting vote?
Well, technically, it's a town meeting vote, only if a town wants to disapprove it.
Yeah, so I think.
Yes.
So what are the, so the managers, in that discussion, we kind of talked through it, and they laid out the cost shares. And I think, I don't know how every member town is going to handle it. Obviously, there are different assessments for different communities, different levels of assessment. For our level of assessment and the extra cost, we would, I would recommend not having a town meeting, not requiring a town meeting vote to approve this. And if we don't do that, then it would just get rolled into our annual assessment. And that would be the approach that I would recommend.
Right. And I see the assessment is 17,000 and some change. And I understand that that would impact the FY '22 budget, would be the first budget that that would impact if it, it is borrowed. And then subsequent years, there would be a continuing assessment against that borrowing. Do I understand that correctly?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. So Stephen Ledoux, as our representative to the school committee there at Minuteman Board, what do you need from us in order to act affirmatively on this?
Well, I mean, as, as both the town manager and the superintendent pointed out, you know, it's, we need maybe, you know, I think the question is to the board, if they feel comfortable not calling a town meeting, in essence, approving, approving this project. I mean, as you pointed out, it's somewhere between 17,000 and 16,000 dollars a year for 10 years. And that was assuming, I think, a 1.75% interest rate. So clearly, we can do much better than that. And, you know, the time is right for that. I mean, you know, the kids have been playing on other people's fields for quite some time, and this would, you know, certainly close out the project. So, you know, it'd be my recommendation that the board opt not to call a town meeting, and in essence, approve this project moving forward. And, you know, that would be how I feel about it.
Okay, thank you. Comments or questions from the board?
Linda and Susan?
Yes, Susan.
I have a few questions. One is, could you briefly recap what the borrowing is for? I understood the 5.95 million is for the three fields, and the 2.1 is for?
For the lighting.
Okay.
Mostly the lighting and a competitive track around the football field, the multi-sport stadium field.
Okay.
And then fencing around all of it, so we can control, you know, dogs and that sort of thing.
Okay, thank you. It's quite, quite a place there.
That's beautiful, yeah. Thank you.
It's a lot of information. I think I would have appreciated having it a little bit before, like, if it could have been sent to the board in our packet. But the other question I had was, I noticed that they're all turf fields. Had you considered natural grass? And if not, why?
We did consider natural grass as part of this whole design process. And what we're going with in this, what's been bid is, I don't think you can really call it a synthetic field anymore. It's, it's got a thing called Brock fill, which is a wood particle infill, especially designed for artificial turf, with a sand base underneath it. It's actually made, it's grown here in the United States, and it's made from southern yellow pine, which is a sustainably harvested and planted tree species. And it goes through a process, and it's converted to small, smooth particles, very highly durable, but it does need to be replaced. And sometimes, it actually needs to be watered if, if the environmental conditions are such. So previously, we had always had, in our bid specifications for this, an encapsulated rubber fill, which, you know, you know the rubber fill with the black stuff that goes all over the place and gets into everybody's house and ears and lungs. We're not using that. We're basically using a wood product.
So what is the, is there a difference in the length of life of the fields with this wood product versus cut-up rubber tires?
Actually, the life of the field is about the same. In our, in our analysis and in our financial planning, we're figuring the life of all these fields is between 10 to 12 years. So we're putting aside money every year so that when we have to replace them, we have the money right there. We don't have to reassess or go borrow again.
Thank you.
Sure.
Jane, did you have your hand up, or?
Well, part, part of what I was going to ask was specific, Susan just asked in terms of the turf fields. I assume that while you might have to water it, that the value is still that you get greater seasonal.
Right. Yeah, that, I'm sorry. That's why we're not doing, you know, natural turf fields, because you have to rest those fields. And certainly, the hours of use is so much greater with a turf field. And then the lighting would add that many more hours for rental and revenue generation that would go to the maintenance and, and capital replacement needs of the field.
So the, the sort of follow-on question I would have is, in terms of the lighting, what sustainability components are you, are you adding to? I mean, that's, that's a lot of, that's a lot of energy. I assume they're going to be LED and state-of-the-art in terms of efficiency.
Right. Well, we, so we had to build these fields and comply with two different towns. And Lincoln has a dark sky compliant requirement. So we made sure that all the fields complied with that dark sky requirement. And the lighting fixtures that we selected, you know, they're very focused how they light just the field, and they comply with all the safety requirements that the different athletic organizations have put forth. They are, you know, I don't know what the, low energy is the correct term. They're, I don't think you can call them green. But our, our lead, our process to get the lead reimbursement from MSBA is actually, part of this lighting was submitted to, through the application. And the other thing that I haven't talked about much, I don't think I even mentioned it to the town managers lately, because it was delayed, but we are putting a photovoltaic array on top of the school.
That's what I, that's what I was sort of leading to.
Yeah.
Because we had, we had heard rumors, but.
Yeah. Well, we had, yeah. There's been a lot of rumors about Minuteman over the years, but.
Absolutely.
This, we had originally a parking lot designed, because 10 years ago, or no, no, what year is this? Yeah, 10 years ago, Minuteman and the town of Lincoln collaborated and got a photovoltaic overlay district established in what is currently our parking lot. And, but the problem, the price, the size of the system was so low that we couldn't get enough competitive interest in that size of, type of a system. So we went with a rooftop system, which I hope is going to start sometime this winter, all in compliance. The other cool thing that we're working with, we're working with a company called Solar Block. They're a startup company. And we, Minuteman and Solar Block got a grant together to help develop training materials for this. It's a basic cinder block, SMCU, concrete masonry unit. And it has a, embedded in it, it has a solar panel. And as you build the wall, you, the electricians hook in, hook these together, and you build a solar collection device on the outside of your building. We had hoped that they would have UL approval, United Laboratories approval prior to the construction, but they didn't. So we couldn't put it on our building. But we do have a foundation on the south here that we're hoping to do. And we were hoping to get innovation points around that lead certification there. But with COVID and everything hitting, Solar Block got a lot of their processes delayed. But it's a really awesome product.
So I was wondering if any of the, the classes that you're holding would be able to work on any of the, the solar, since, since that's, you know, turning out electrical workers that have that level of familiarity and engineers, et cetera, et cetera, is, is...
Yeah. We actually put in the bid specs, they have to articulate how they're going to integrate the construction, the design process with our students. We did that with Gil Bane when they built the, when they were bidding on the building. And over the years that the building was built, our kids were involved. And they actually came and taught classes, too, about some of the, the technologies that they use on the computer to do crash testing before the building even goes up. And so, yeah, it's important to us. We have an environmental technology program, of course, an electrical trades program, landscaping, horticulture program, engineering and robotics program. So we're, we're looking forward to having the kids involved in, not construction, they can't do that, but they can be there while things are happening and, and be observing.
Great. Okay. Any other comments or questions from the board?
Yeah, I have a few.
Ma'am?
So just to characterize this project a little bit differently, was the build-out of the... was the build out of the turf fields and the, the athletic facilities originally in the budget? And now, okay, so this is essentially a budget overrun that we're paying for?
No, no, we have, we borrowed 144.9 million dollars. And within that 144.9 was a, were athletic fields. When we got to the end of the project, and so that budget was done six years ago now. When we got to the budget there, when we got through the process, there were a couple of things that happened. Most notably, most recently, there was contaminated soil where the building was, which is now gone, which is where the athletic fields would be. That cost overrun was about $750,000. We had enough in our contingency. We knew we would have to take it, some things out as we went forward. And though what got taken out was the lighting.
So, and I'm really confused that like the cost listed is 5.9 for what's already in scope. And then there's another two, right, that you're, you're talking about 2.6 or something that we're talking about now. And.
About $2 million.
$2 million, but then compared to the original budget of 20?
That was a project we, let me just back up.
You talked about cutting the, you know, the, the refreshment standard in the stadium. But I don't know, it seems like most of the scope, at least in terms of the, the playing fields is being proposed to still be there. I mean, you're not, at this point, especially if the $2 million additional is approved, virtually all of those, the playing facilities are going to be there for much less, you know, for only about, what, 40% of the, 30, 40% of the original budget.
The original budget of 20 million, you mean?
Yeah, yeah, it's 8 million instead of 20 and.
Let me explain that then, okay? And you, so we'll go back a few years. When Lexington and Minuteman were talking about building a much larger facility because of the demand in the area. The demand through the Lexington Recs Department, as well as demand from some of our other communities around us, Arlington, even Waltham. So Lexington, originally, we were talking about a, a larger project where Lexington would contribute, at that time, $8 million to the project. So what was Minuteman contributing? Well, we were contributing the demolition of the school, which was four and a half million, the remediation of the site, which was another couple of, all that was covered under our MSBA project. But for the purposes of analyzing the enterprise, we wanted to pull some of those costs out of the MSBA project and look at it as its own enterprise. In other words, what's the value of this thing being scoped out? And that's where the $20 million comes in because in that $20 million, I can send you a very detailed.
So what you're saying is net, that originally the Minuteman's contribution was going to be 12 out of the 20?
Yeah.
And now it's going to be eight?
Well, Lexington and Minuteman decided that the, the, it wasn't a good fit. So Lexington is putting in zero and Minuteman is putting in the equivalent of 12. And if we want to get the lighting and the fencing and sort of maximize our revenue potential, borrowing another 1.9 to 2 million would get us closer to that revenue potential that we.
So how is the 12 that you just mentioned compared to the almost six that we saw on the PowerPoint?
It's all part of the 20. So if you took the six.
The grand, so I guess I'm still missing six here because it, it sounds like the original scope was 20. Lexington dropped out, that would have made it 12 in my mind. And then you scoped it down to six and now we're adding two to make it eight. But that doesn't sound like the math you just said. It sounded like you were saying somehow it's 12 and then we're going to add two, it's going to be 14. But we only, I don't know, six, we only looked at six.
Well, the, the field house was almost five and a half million.
So the field house is not in this.
Field house is not in.
Oh, okay.
Tennis courts are not in it. That was another million and a half, I believe.
So there's the 8 million that's taken out of scope?
Yeah.
Okay, so then that would bring us down to 12. And then, so then what?
So you take 12.
Yeah.
Minus the cost of demolition, which was about four and a half, let's say four. So now you're down to eight.
The pieces we're not looking at, we're not looking at demolition cost in the, in what you.
We've already took, we've already spent that money.
Okay, so there's where that just delta is coming. I was still trying to figure out how you got up to 14 grand total.
No, you know, your, your questions are good. I think I'll put a little slide together that shows that then.
Okay, and then, I mean, the thing about the contaminated soil, I mean, that's what I would imagine a construction contingency is for. But it seems like this is, you've spent the contingency and then will need a little bit more to get a little less than what we originally scoped. So that's what I mean, and it looks like we're funding a, we're basically funding a project cost overrun. Now, there may be good reasons for that, like you said, six year old budget. But I think, you know, I guess I'm just trying to understand how to characterize what we're doing here and whether or not we need the voter's consent, right? Because, you know, this is paying yet more for the facility than what the town agreed to pay.
Yes, the 2 million is outside the scope of the MSBA authorization, that's why.
And so I'm really curious how we would authorize an additional $2 million spending, you know, without town meeting approval. I'm still unclear about how that's supposed to work.
Well, it, I, I share your concern. I mean, that's why we've been talking with the town managers right along about this. We want to be very transparent about it. This is not an unusual process for a regional school. I think it's Chapter 71, Section 16D, where by virtue of non-disapproval, a capital, a borrowing authorization can be approved. It happens quite frequently in, in these smaller numbers, smaller dollar numbers, divided by nine towns. That's why the annual, I mean, I don't know what it would cost to hold a town meeting, but.
Well, yeah, and I mean, it seems like we would have to have a special town meeting since our annual town meeting is not planned until next June. I mean, when do you need a resolution on this?
Matt, if I might, once, once the school committee votes to borrow the money, which could be, I thought it was next Tuesday, Ed, but I'm not really sure either. The town has 60 days to call a town meeting if they are so inclined. So it's a very narrow window. And as you say, with the cost of calling a town meeting, which in my experience is sometimes around $10,000 and getting into the holidays, you know, I mean, I, I know what you're saying about, you know, voter approval, but this is a little weird. It's voter disapproval. So I guess it's a question of whether the board, you know, it's really UL's decision of whether you feel comfortable kind of making that decision on behalf of the town or bringing it to a town meeting in a very narrow window.
So, okay, but I thought, is it the school committee that makes the determination or is it us?
School committee votes to borrow the money. You guys have to decide if you want to call a town meeting or in essence, just let the project move forward.
And then if the school committee for some reason decided not to approve the additional borrowing, what would happen?
We just do the base bid of 5.9 million is that, Ed, it's on.
And then have other towns already weighed in on this?
And unofficially, yes.
But you don't have any other non-disapprovals?
Well, we have, nobody's, the school committee hasn't voted to borrow yet, so there would be no formal disapprovals or anything.
No, no, but from any of the other towns, so none of the other towns.
We've had no showstoppers at all.
But no action yet from any of them?
It's.
No.
It's just you're feeling like it's, they're going smoothly, all the others.
Yeah, absolutely.
Matt, as I mentioned, that was my sense from the discussion with the other managers as well.
Okay. And then I was surprised by the revenue numbers. They seemed very high, just is a typical field rental for the night, is it like three grand, four grand?
On occasion, well, if you look at the number of hours that are available to rent, it's in the thousands when you have lights. And, you know, municipal rates are not the entire revenue stream. We have a lot of private organizations that are seeking to rent our fields. We actually, when we were designing the, the full build, we actually invited them to the table to talk about what it is they would like to see in a facility. Some of those groups are paying anywhere from 150 to $400 an hour to use fields of this quality.
Yeah, it's just, it still would be hard to get to 450K with that, given that, you know, we're not talking 365 days.
It's not really hard at all. I can send you the spreadsheet and the assumptions that are in it. I can send you the Ballard and King report. They were much more conservative than we were, so they, we adopted their numbers.
Okay. And I mean, I guess for me, my perspective, the bottom line is, we don't have all the info we need. We just got some of it. I still don't have any of it, you know, in hand. It sounds like we can wait until next Monday to deliberate and I would recommend that.
So my understanding is that this assessment, once approved, will be within the levy limit and will be against our annual budget per se.
It's part of your Minuteman assessment?
Yeah, that's in the annual budget.
You're right, and we have in our annual operating budget, there are some operating capital expenditures. And then there's the whole building project as a separate capital expense outside of the regular operating budget.
All right. Yes, Stephen?
So I just want to comment on the materials. That was a disconnect with Ed and I. I wasn't sure if he was going to give the same presentation that, that was, that I had seen or if it had changed. And so we just caught, we just connected today on the slides. And so part of that is on our end in terms of not getting it until before the meeting. I don't want to make it seem like the, the school had withheld the information. It was, it was on, it was on, it was on my end for not reaching out to him to see if he had materials for the packet.
Any other comments from the board, board members?
Yeah, Susan again.
Yes.
I have two questions. One is, how does that revenue, the several hundred thousand dollar expected revenue from facility rental, is that what we would call an enterprise fund? Or does that somehow flow into operating? The bottom line question is, will it affect our assessment favorably?
Yeah, good question. We, we call them revolving accounts, similar to enterprise accounts. But the, what comes out of our revolving account, you can only use the revenue for things that are associated. You can only expend out of that for things associated with the revenue. So maintenance and operation of the facility, the capital replacement costs, we intend to take out of that revolving account.
Okay.
Like we've done with our other revolving accounts.
The second question is, based on your, Matt's comments and your, your dialogue with him, are we the first select board in your member towns that you have brought it, brought this proposal to, to the select board meeting?
You're the first ones I'm in an official meeting with, but I've had conversations with most of them unofficially.
Okay.
Like tonight, I'm having a meeting with Needham and Lexington, I think. Yeah, Lexington, actually Lexington's at 6:15, Needham's at 7:30, tomorrow's Stowe at 7:00.
The, the other thing too, Susan, is at our last school committee meeting, when we, we voted on, on this to, to keep moving forward on the bonding, a, a lot of the school committee members were going to talk to their boards themselves. And that, I don't know if that's happened or not, especially some smaller towns like Lancaster and, and Bolton. I, I believe those reps were going to go and Stowe as well, talk to some of their selectmen. So we've not heard about whether that's happened yet or not.
Well, I would support Matt's suggestion that we get the material and have till next Monday to, to look it over.
Yeah.
Sure.
Okay. And it, it would be helpful, I, I think, if we have some feedback from these early meetings that you're also having that we can consider. So a return from some of whoever can represent you with that information would be helpful.
Absolutely. Happy to.
And I would also ask the town manager to get the town finance directors weigh in on this item as well. Our official financial officer, Carrie, to weigh in on this would be helpful.
And Linda?
Yes.
I like the idea. Ed, you mentioned a couple of additional slides. I think those would be very helpful if you could add those.
Yep, absolutely.
If I can ask you add one more additional question. I, I realize it was not on the slide that you presented, but it was in our material. I, I was having difficulty following the increased contingency on that bottom line on the slide that you didn't show that was in the original packet. Can you just speak to that briefly?
The contingency in the, in the athletic project.
Yes, and it was over successive years showing that contingency line against the, the costs?
Yeah, well, standard practice is to create a roughly a 9 to 11% contingency amount. And it, as we added the alternates to the cost of the project, we increased the contingency based upon those added costs until we got to the last two alternates, which were equipment and fencing. Realizing that equipment, why would you have a contingency in there? Because you're just buying equipment, as when the fencing was a very simple, straightforward. So in other words, it's like unforeseen costs. It's a placeholder. It could, we couldn't.
So was that contingency, and I'm sorry, I don't have it in front of me to refer to right now, but was that contingency for the alternates that are not being borrowed against at this point? If you could just refresh my memory on that?
I'm, I think I'm looking at the slide. Let me just.
So where I'm going with this question, depending on that data, is again, its impact on future assessments.
Oh. The contingency, is this what you're looking at? Can you, am I showing you my screen?
No.
Okay, well, maybe try this one. Is this the?
That, that's the, yeah, thank you. Yeah, it was for the alternates, yeah.
Yeah, see, as the contingency row, as you go across, adding each alternate, it continues up in price. But it's, it's included in the overall, so it would make no difference on assessments going forward.
Okay, that's, that was my question. Okay. So I've heard a recommendation and I think generally I certainly agree with it. I think we're going to come back to this issue next Monday. The town manager will consult with the chief financial officer and bring her opinion on this to us. You're going to come back with some slides with some additional information, hopefully prior to Monday. If we could have that before the end of the week, that would be helpful so that people have a chance to look at it over the weekend would be helpful. And I think that's where we are right now.
So just to recap, I'll send you the Ballard and King report, which is about nine pages with their assumptions. And I can also send you the detailed analysis of the revenue projections. And then sort of a reconciliation slide around the full build. I'm probably confusing folks that weren't at the table for the whole thing around the full build because it was a separate project that never really got off the ground. And so we're going, kind of going back to our original MSBA budgeted athletic fields.
Okay.
I'll try to make that clear in a slide. And if any of you have any questions, feel free to email me.
And then the last item was to have some feedback from the towns that you are interacting with in terms of concerns and issues and how they're thinking about. with, in terms of concerns and issues, and how they're thinking about proceeding?
Yeah, we'll have a lot of that by the end of the week.
Okay, great. Sorry to make you come back, but I think this is important enough that we want to be able to speak to a lot of concerns that were raised here.
No, I agree, and we want to be as transparent as possible with what we're doing. Took a long time to get to school. I want to give the kids good athletic fields.
I bet. All right, well, thank you for your time and all the information, and for listening well to all of our questions and comments. Thank you.
Thanks for having us, I appreciate it.
And hopefully you can join us next week. Thank you. All right, I think we're ready to, I see that, I saw Lindsay in the audience, if I recall, let me just check.
You've got me, Tara Edelman.
Hi Tara, okay, fine. I think we will return now to the review of the Library Committee Administrative Code. And thank you for being here, Tara. Okay, so Tara, do you just want to briefly present why you're here today to be with us?
Sure thing, and I hope you'll bear with me, I wasn't prepared for this, so I'm kind of winging it, so feel free to ask questions if I'm not clear. So, as everybody knows, this summer, well, over the past year, the agreement between the library corporation and the town was reviewed and updated and approved, I think, late summer, August maybe. And during that process, some questions came up about the role of the library committee in that context. And as a result, we on the library committee decided it would be worthwhile to review the administrative code, which I believe had not been updated since sometime like mid 90s. Oh, actually, that, yeah, the date's no longer there, but I think it was updated in the mid 90s. Thank you, Terry. So we created a subcommittee, we reviewed the document. We actually thought, for the most part, the document was pretty well representative of our roles, but we felt there were a couple of changes we could make, with an aim toward providing us with opportunities to ensure that we can, we can bring increased representation and diversity into the committee when those opportunities arise. And also to continue to increase the amount of collaboration and transparency in our work with the town and with the library corporation. And so, to that end, we made a few small changes. You'll see under membership, that we're recommending that it be changed to say that the library committee is comprised of seven members. And that, instead of, okay, so we added the word minimum to that, so it's a minimum of seven members. But if we were to get a slate of candidates who we thought might bring more diversity to the committee, so socioeconomic diversity, racial diversity, age, what, we are, we're not necessarily that representative right now. So if we had three candidates and only two spots, we might consider adding an eighth or ninth member to the committee in order to accommodate that. And then, the next change was, oh, so toward the end in section nine, we have, I'm just saying.
So Tara, I think in the number one, you also added some additional language about committee membership representative of a wide range of the community as possible. I think that was raising.
Yes. Yes, so that's, that's in addition to changing the word minimum. And then, I feel like, oh, I see how this is working, sorry, I'm just trying to understand the way the document was presented. So we added in section C, we, as of about a year ago, created a standing item on our agenda, that was an invitation to a representative of the library corporation to come to our meetings. And that's basically just to account for the fact that often, because we're volunteers and the library corporation are volunteers, there, things move quickly as we're working with the town, and sometimes, like, with all the best intentions, we don't always have a chance to update each other. So we created a formal invitation for somebody from the corporation to come to the library committee once a month, and provide any updates that they felt were appropriate. And so in order to ensure that continues into the future, we added, "A standing invitation shall be issued for a representative of the library corporation to provide an update to and communicate with the library committee as a standing part of the committee agenda." So those are the changes we're recommending. I'm just going to skim it one more time to make sure there's, so there's a wording change in bullet nine, where Board of Selectmen was changed to Select Board. So those are the changes we're proposing. Anybody has any questions?
Yeah, thank you. Comments and questions from any of the board members? So, one, I applaud you for, this had not been looked at for some time, and, and as you said, given the library agreement, thank you for doing that. Just to, to note for your purposes, that I think we usually, as a convention, we usually retain all the individual dates of revision, and I noticed that this one just, you know, had dropped off to 4/14/97. And it's important, and the reason that's important is that we can see successively, it was looked at, you know, 10 years ago, it was looked at five years ago, et cetera, et cetera. So just, and then, so the third revision would be when the select board finally approves this, would be added to that corner. I applaud you for looking at the membership of your committee, and particularly, given your interest in trying to expand the diversity. I, I just wanted to come in on, I, I found the wording to be a little bit awkward, and I, I just wanted to, and recommend some potential way to, but I, I, I'm not in any way conflicted with what you're suggesting. I'm just coming up with some additional wording that hopefully captures what you're after, and some other board members may have some comments to make as well. I, I just, every effort will be made to ensure that the committee membership represents as wide a range as possible of community stakeholder groups and townwide population demographics. So I was, whoops, you're on mute.
Have you written that down?
I have, I can send that to you if you want to.
That'd be lovely.
Take a look at that. Some of my colleagues may have some other comments on that. And also in your number one, I noticed that you mentioned the library committee is comprised of a minimum of seven members. And I think when the select board writes new charges as well as approved charges, there's a reason that a definitive number is put there, and that relates to quorum requirements, so that it's always clear for open meeting law, you know, what is a quorum. So, I, I offer that to, to consider as well, when you go back and, and look at that. Thank you.
So I, oh, sorry. I understand what you're saying, and I'm curi, I, I think that, I agree. And I'm curious about how you would suggest we could phrase that so that we still allow ourselves, I guess we would modify the quorum if we elected to increase the size of the committee. There would need to be some formal process.
Ma'am.
Another strategy is just to have a different category of member, like an associate member, so you could have seven full members and two associates. And, and then, of course, you know, it's less urgent to fill the associate slots, but if you do get a member, and then you can promote associate members to full members as, as it makes sense.
Great.
Yeah. And thank you for changing selectmen to select board, so that's current, so that's good. Any other, and I thought the, Mike personally, and I would like my colleagues to weigh in here, I thought codifying your relationship with the, the corporation coming in for every meeting, you know, is consistent with what you're trying to accomplish, and it also reflects, you know, the essential partnership that is required over there at the library. Any other comments from select board members? All right, so Tara, has this been helpful to go back to the drawing board?
This is great, I'll bring it back to the committee, and thank you for bearing with me while I quickly caught up.
Well, no, but thank you for being here to represent this.
All right, take care.
Okay, thank you.
Bye.
Bye. All right, the next agenda item is the delegation of signature authority for housing administrative matters. That was in our packet last week, that document. Comments, no, I don't think anyone's here to present this necessarily, we've all had a chance to read it. Stephen, did you want to comment on this?
Yeah, I just think there's, you know, there's a lot of steps in, in process for housing, especially, you know, if there's funding attached to it, there's a lot of administrative stuff, and I think, in the past, I think there's, you know, by and large, some of the things were just done administratively, some were brought to the boards, we just wanted to clarify, you know, those, those circumstances and, and clarify our process.
And I have spoken, yeah, Kerry, did you have a question? Go ahead.
Yes, just a process question. So this was on our agenda last week, and I'm trying to remember, I don't quite understand why it's back now, did we forget to vote on it, or was there something in research? I've forgotten why it's back.
The agenda item last week was just related to that specific address, 333 Walden Street, I think. And so this one is just more generally for administrative housing matters, but the, Liz's memo recommending this was in the packet last week. So it's really just the way the agenda item was listed.
Okay, so I just want to make sure I understand. So last week, we voted on 333 Walden Street.
Correct.
We're being asked to vote for the process in general, is that correct? So the memo that we had in the packet last week, was, that was just about 333 Walden Street, is that right?
No.
Oh, that was in general?
Yeah. It was administrative, it was a recommendation from Liz Russ regarding authorization for the town manager to handle administrative matters. And that was not on the agenda, so it could not be taken up, but it was included in the packet.
Okay, I remember it was on the agenda, but maybe that was just for 333 Walden Street.
That's right. That was a separate item.
I guess, I, I'd like to request, if this happens again, to, to put the paperwork in again, in the, in the, like, if we had that memo in this packet, I think, again, even though we had it last time, I would have been less confused. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does.
Okay, thanks.
It certainly does. Stephen, are you able to pull that up and share that?
Yeah, sure. I have it right here, in fact. Sure, so, this is the memo to, that Liz sent me, prior to the last meeting, and she outlines our role as a monitoring agent for a lot of housing projects, and, you know, goes through, you know, there's memos, and, and, and the RHSO does a lot of this, and a lot of the things that need to be, that need, end up needing a signature are, are developed by them, and a lot of them are, you know, right of refusal for homeownership, when you're units under resale, you know, compliance certificate for the resale of affordable units, those are all things that administratively we contract with the RHSO to ensure. The right of refusal, I think there are times where the town will want to consider whether or not they want to waive the right of refusal. I don't, based on the, the ones I've seen so far, I haven't seen anything, but I know that towns, whether it be DPLM or the RHSO, I know that, that we would be notified of a property that the town may want to retain that right of first refusal, and so then we wouldn't, and then, of course, that would be brought to the board, to see if there was a broader kind of policy or other, you know, facilities goal that we want to achieve. But this just leaves, gives, gives the town manager the authority to sign them, because like I said, that a lot of times, there are transactions that are on hold pending these administrative actions, and that's really the real driver for it all, is, and like in the case of the Walden Street property, there's a family that's waiting to sell their house because they've identified another place they want to move to, and so we want to, because these are really just kind of routine administrative things, make it so they don't get hung up in meeting posting timelines and things like that.
So, I, I would further comment, having done a lot with housing, obviously, you could see from the paperwork for habitat, you saw how many pages are involved with the paperwork, the DHCD has a long list of requirements, somebody else has a long list of requirements, the home funds have, and there are so many things that sometimes have, are, are timed limited, number one, but are, in terms of the scope, are fairly limited in terms of what needs to be signed off on. And so Liz has outlined a lot of those items, and I actually have been in conversation with her since this memo came out, just to make sure that my understanding was consistent with what I had seen in the past. The key paragraph for me was the la, was also the last paragraph about what would still come before the select board. So any new regulatory agreements, any creation of new housing units, et cetera, that requires approval for LIP applications, the big items would still, as they have done in the past, would still come before the select board, and for me, that was key.
I think the only one that I would question a little bit is just the right of refusal. And for that one, I'm still a little bit unclear about the distinction between us approving and then the signatory authority being, I mean, I think delegating signatory authority is also delegating the decision, at least legally, right? I mean, that, if someone could sign, they can decide. So, I just wonder, I mean, we don't get that many of these, and the electronic signature process has certainly, you know, expedited the whole process of getting signatures. So I just wonder, do we need to include that one in the list? Perhaps it could go in the list below. Otherwise, I absolutely am on, on, on board with this. And again, you know, it's a minor question I've got, it's not a outright objection.
Yeah.
I think from, from my perspective on that, Matt, I think, my understanding is that a lot of the, those big packages of documents that Linda referred to, I think a right of first refusal for the municipality is a standard part of that. And so the number of times where it's going to come up and be more than administrative is, is pretty low, and like I said, I think we'd have a sense of that. And, you know, if we, like I said, if we had the sense that this was a bigger, this, this was a property that, that the board or the town had more than a passing interest in, then of course, we would bring that back for discussion, which is, I, I think how it, it has been handled in the past.
Well, and then, isn't there also a financial aspect to this, that in the case of the right of first refusal, is that you'd have to come up with some money, right?
You would need, you would need appropriation and, and an authorization.
But then you also have a fund for affordable housing, right? I mean, it's already been appropriated by the town, so in theory, could that just be spent?
Not by me, I think it would be, I thought, I thought we just, Liz, the, this past time, we, we invested that with the affordable housing.
Trust, which has not been formed.
Right. I, I think, like I said, I think the short term is the.
In the interim, it's the town manage with, with select board approval.
Okay, great.
For the existing.
All right. Then, I, I'm fine. We could go in with this, I have no problem.
Yeah, okay.
Am I okay to stop sharing screen?
Yeah, I think so, thank you. That was helpful. Any other comments or questions from board members? Okay, if not, I'm ready to. Okay, if not, I'm ready to hear a motion.
Move to delegate signature authority for housing administrative matters to the town manager.
As outlined in the memo of October 29th, 2020.
Second.
Outlined in the memo of October 29th, 2020.
Thank you. And there was a second?
Yes.
Please call the roll.
Ms. Escobedo?
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss?
Aye.
And myself, Ms. Bates, aye.
Okay, that's unanimous, and the chair so declares. Okay, I'm going to move on to the committee volunteer subcommittee update. And even before we get started, thank everybody who worked so hard and so promptly on this. So thank you. Who would like to present?
I guess I'll present. So we met once, we went over draft outline, as you see here, and made further revisions based upon feedback from everybody. We also, you know, of course, discussed the feedback that had originally been made on the overall idea of having a policy. I think that the most important things, besides the document that you see in front of you, is a sense that we have of that, very much as with the citizen correspondence policy that has not yet been, you know, formalized, right? It's informally kind of, we're, we're working with that, and we may vote it as town policy at some point, I hope, this, this year. The same thing here, that, you know, what we probably should do is try this out and tune it, you know, based upon our experience, and then, then legislate it at that point. So the, the feedback that we got was, you know, that, in particular, Terry, I think, brought that we should identify roles and responsibilities. So I've taken a stab at that, but no one has reviewed my role and responsibility assignments that I've proposed so far, and so in the re, you know, the drafting here. The other thing is that this is not really a policy per se. When you think of a policy document, you think of, you know, broad kinds of suggestions rather than detailed procedures, but this is really a mix of kind of desires or objectives of procedures and of perhaps some policy content. So it's, it's a little bit of a mix, but hopefully it addresses the gap that we have now, which is, you know, being able to systematically recruit and fulfill town board and committee positions.
Well, I think you both captured quite a bit in this, and do we have some additional comments that we can offer, Matt and Terry, on this document? Susan?
Yeah, thank you both. This is extremely comprehensive, and I agree with, with what Matt said about it. I, I see it more as guidance rather than an official policy. I think the only comment I would make is, under recognition, number 10, recognize members' contributions. I think there used to be, I don't know when the last time was, that there was an annual meeting at, held at the library where, I think it was for members who were completing their terms, and the town manager would give you a little Concord pin and make a few comments, and which was a nice thing to do. I would avoid the volunteer of the year item, and I, I think, well, we have the citizen of the year, but I, I don't like the, you know, the something of the year, because I think, in general, because I think it makes one person feel good, and other people are like, how, why did they get that? And I just think avoiding it, now, I'm not talking about citizen of the year, that's a whole different category with a, you know, long history of service to the town, but I'm not sure I would want to go there for the volunteer. That's just my feedback.
Okay, thanks.
I had, I had a question in terms of identifying, identifying vacancies, you know, the, that it seems that the select board liaison's responsibility is for the unexpired terms, but there is no select board liaison responsibility for just regular end of term vacancy filling.
Well, I mean, hopefully, those spots would be pre-identified, because we know the length of members' terms.
Right. I, I agree, I just, what I'm seeing is that, that some of the benefits of having a liaison is that there is a, a unofficial conversational challenge, channel, and obviously, some of this in, in virtual time, this makes a lot more sense. In, in more active hands-on time, it was a place to think out of the box, which is not necessarily the strength of all of the administrative staff, to think out of the box about where you might find people in Concord, who's, you know, who do you know in the pool of people, or who do you, who can you talk to about finding out in terms of interests and, and potential value added?
Okay, so you're talking about section four, the identify candidates, right? Because identify vacancies is simply a, you know, bureaucratic thing of
Maybe I'm just, yeah, convoluting the
So, okay, so identify candidates, perhaps highlight more the select board liaison's role, potentially, in that?
Again, I think that that would be a place where, yes, I mean, the select board liaison, it just, that's been the role in my experience.
Yeah.
And I think doesn't mean you always have, as a select board member, always have great advice or great knowledge or ideas, but it's a pool to, to pull from.
Yeah, could that maybe be just adding that role to 4B2? Reach out to personal contacts, I right now have got board and committee members, but, and select board liaison? Or you're, you're maybe thinking of something a little more expansive?
So, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Are we, are we, when it comes to regular vacancies, we have a, an inventory, if you will, on our website now.
Right.
That Jeremy is tracking. So I think if we're talking about resignations, unexpired, you know, certain moves out of town, something like that, you know, I just want to make sure, is that what we're talking about?
Well, so that was what section three, item three, is about, and somebody's got to tell Jeremy that, hey, this person resigned, you know? And, and so I assume that the select board liaison is the best person to do that for select board nominated committees, that, at least that's what I've suggested.
I think sometimes it's the select board liaison, and sometimes it's been the committee chair, and
And sometimes it's staff who are staffing that committee.
Yeah, so, I mean, I guess the, the whole point of this procedure is trying to limit ambiguity and kind of volleyball in the sand possibilities, you know, where there are three different people that might do it, and none of them ended up doing it, and so nothing happened.
Right, right. I, I understand your, the goal is to, is to, you know, at the very least, create a responsibility line.
Yeah, clarity, yeah.
Yeah. I think that the, the difficulty for a Jeremy, and I'm not meaning to single out Jeremy, but for the purpose of administrative staff, is that not all of our websites are up to date. So unless he's running Zoom and happens to know, therefore, who's, where somebody is on a, on a committee, unless somebody from the committee directly, or the staff member, because that particular committee has a staff member assigned to it, get in contact, the only other failsafe is the select board liaison.
Yeah, and I, I would just suggest if the staff or the, the committee chair says, oh, you know, we're, we're, we just got a resignation, they should talk to their select board liaison. That, that's the idea, hopefully, and then we should talk to Jeremy.
And so, just an observation, I know that Mike Lawson did this on a number of meetings, and I certainly have done it consistently since I took over the chair's meeting, always asking for people around the table to identify vacancies. And what I've done after that meeting is to then immediately look at the list that I accumulated from that meeting against what Jeremy has on his cumulative list on the website. And then if for some reason something wasn't posted, I sent it on to Jeremy. So I, I guess my only point in making that observation is, my experience is you need multiple avenues to tackle this even.
Right. That's a very good point, Linda. I think that was very helpful when Mike or you are announcing at the chair's breakfast. The chair's breakfast is televised, all the committee chairs are hearing about the vacancies. I think we should add that in here, and I also think we added
They're also identifying vacancies.
Right.
Yeah.
That's what I mean, sorry, identifying vacancies. And I think we also added an idea that Matt had, that probably in the chair's remarks at our select board meeting, we routinely announce vacancies. That might be something we consider. And then finally, in number four, we added 4A2. This is, sometimes we know there's vacancies, but we can't identify candidates. And I've, I found it really helpful that if someone applies to planning board, but there's no opening in that, well, maybe they'll be interested in conservation commission, or, you know, whatever. I think that sometimes it's necessary to go through the whole group of related green cards, and, and we don't really have a good system for doing that right now. I'm wondering if we could research if there's some kind of canned reports that we could do or something like that. So like, in other words, if you're, let's say you're the chair of the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail, and you're looking for more volunteers, and there aren't any right now, except for the person we're appointing tonight, which is great, but now we might need some more. What if we looked at the green cards for people who want to serve, but they didn't apply for Bruce Freeman Rail Trail? Maybe they applied for something else that's, or maybe in their resume, there's something that would lead you to think that they might be interested. You could at least ask them if they want to serve. So I'm just wondering how we can get a list of people who have applied recently and are on the green card, but not to that specific committee.
I guess, Terry, if I can speak to that, they can list a, a number of preferences.
Right.
And so I, I think it's, I don't know that I'm, that I'm comfortable with, with trying to engineer their own decision-making. If people have the, I mean, they can put whatever committee they want on, I think it's, it puts a lot of pressure on whoever, whether it's the liaison or the chair or, or staff, to kind of mine a list for people who haven't signed up for a particular committee. And so I don't know, you know, I really don't know if just kind of cold calling people, I mean, this, what Matt is laying out is going to, you know, I'm glad I heard soft opening, you know, or soft launch on this, because, you know, and, and I guess let me say this, I think a lot of times you may have associate members or people that are in mind, and you don't have to run through some of this, because you already have people queued up, ready to go, for whatever reason. But if we ran this end to end for a number of committees, it's, it's a lot of time and energy and effort with, with a lot of people that have to play a role in it, not just town staff. And so I just want to, to add it, to add a kind of, you know, you know, search, search mission for people who didn't even sign up for the committee, I don't know how we could do, I don't know how we could do that.
Well, just to clarify that, I know we want to engineer somebody's decision, but have personally data mined through the green cards and done the cold calls and got a very good reception. A lot of people were pleased and flattered that they were thought of. Maybe they were too busy to serve, and actually succeeded in recruiting somebody who otherwise had kind of dropped off the list completely. And it was necessary, because all the other avenues of recruitment had failed. So it's just something to keep in mind.
Yeah, and I'd just also like to weigh in that, you know, Stephen, I hear you on just how many bullet points there are in this procedure, it's a lot. But then, on the other hand, we have, we're doing all this stuff anyway, just not in a systematic way. We still have to staff all these boards and committees, and right now, we're sort of doing it by hook and by crook. And so all of this is hoping to make it easier for people, not harder, is what I guess.
Any other comments? If not, I'd like to make a few, and again, my thanks to both of you. Under appointing members, and this may have been intentional on your part, or you had thought about this a little differently than what we have typically done, but I added a C, send appointment cards after you appoint the members. Then typically Jeremy sends appointment cards that verifies the dates, and then, and then under orient members, the first thing I put was, committee appointee is sworn in by the clerk's office.
Oh, yeah.
Absolutely.
That's pretty important. Well, actually, here's the last bullet here, right? I mean, it, well, I don't know, it's before, it's
I, I happen to put it under oriented members, that was the first thing, but it could, it could go either place.
Yeah.
I think that's so important, because
And then it's usually, yeah, go ahead.
Someone pointed out a couple of minutes ago, there are some people who don't know exactly when their term ends. Very important to keep good records, so this is great.
And then it, so, once they're sworn in by the town clerk, at least more, last couple of years, it's the town clerk's office that's handing them the committee handbook.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Right. And governance, let's see. Oh, the B, under governance, towards the end, I just said, the ethics, the training is periodically scheduled. That was just a
Yeah, okay.
And then, and then under nine, under A, remind members of requirement to retake online ethics training by annually, town clerk. My recollection was, and submit the certificate of completion to the town clerk's office. I think that's now required.
Okay, just a second, and
And there's forms to that effect in the back of the committee handbook.
Okay, so this
That was at the, I, I had
So under nine B, there should be a nine C, basically.
Oh, it's part of nine
To the end of A, but that's
Right, it's part of nine A.
Okay, because it would just be certified, I mean, I've got track compliance.
And, and submit certificate of completion to the town clerk's office.
Okay, yeah.
No, in A, it goes in A.
Okay.
Because once you take the training, the certificate pops up.
Well, that's what I'm saying, tracks or compliance with, with training requirements. So how could it go in A if
Well, because as soon as they reach, well, it's
Right.
You're reminding them, then they do it.
Yeah, and then they do it. I'm way back here on page eight.
Oh, it's really both.
A or, yeah, maybe.
Yeah, it's
It's the concept, anyway, wherever
Yeah, yeah, okay, I'll figure
I was trying to link it and make it
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
People didn't miss it, whatever.
So hold it, you're reporting, just to, so I can just capture it somewhere. Report, compliance Compliance certified, it's certified compliance.
Yeah, but that won't communicate to the average. I, I just said submit certificate of completion. I, I made it concrete as.
Oh, they don't have to do that anymore, do they?
Yeah.
I mean, isn't it automatically reported?
Well, that needs to be checked.
Okay, because I, I, I would hope it was automatically reported.
But they need, anyway, they need to complete it.
Okay.
Obtain, obtain it. They're supposed to keep a copy for the records, yeah.
When you, when you do the, complete the ethics or whatever the course is, it'll pop up and say, do you want a paper copy or an electronic copy? And then I thought that I submitted that to the town clerk.
Right.
Okay.
I did too, I think.
Right.
Okay.
Um, quick question for, a comment that Susan made on number 10. Susan, you were talking about the annual appreciation event, which is number 10A. And I wasn't sure what your comment was because we weren't doing it. We, we've still been doing it except for COVID. So.
And I, I just couldn't remember, is it for all volunteers or is it for those who are completing their term? I can't, Jane.
Jane.
Yeah, historically, it's been for those who are completing their term.
Right. So are you suggesting changing that, Susan?
No, no, not at all. Um, no. I think it's a great recognition.
And so I recall the people who complete their term receive the, the award, but everybody who's serving is invited to the little party.
Yeah.
That's true.
Yeah. So, um, any, now I have just a couple more comments. Any others before I? So, um, I'm not sure where this goes, Matt, but, and it sort of relates to Jane's opening point about how do you get, you know, we first usually turn to chairs and say, you know, reach out and find somebody to fill this spot, or at least historically, that's what we've done. But how do we capture helping them, to use Jane's word, think outside of the box and, and consider other external groups or other ways of finding the people besides just who they know? Because it gets to bringing the skill sets that these committees need. But it also gets into, you know, our stated goals about trying to diversify our, our participation and engagement.
Yeah.
So you don't have to do that now, but.
Yeah.
It, it's just something, so, and then the one last comment I'll make, and again, you know, I'm just, you gave us a wonderful structure here to, to work off of. I, after I, I went through all of this, I said to myself, okay, I'm a chair of a committee. Where is my thumbnail? Like first you do this, do this, do this, do this. So this is a sort of a internal.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. By role. Yep.
And so that might, that might be.
Sideways view of the thing. Yeah.
Right. I think that's a very helpful comment. I was thinking the same thing. Like when a new select board member comes on and now, okay, you're a liaison. What are you supposed to do? Well, there's a whole bunch of things in here that you have to do. And then also from Jeremy's point of view, are all of these things, things that he's able to do in terms of time, in terms of technical, you know, software, et cetera?
And then also by providing a thumbnail for the, sort of a task list or whatever for the chairs, that may be also where you pull in Jane's concept about how to think about finding potential concepts? I don't know.
I think that's the hardest thing that, I don't think we've completely tackled that. I think you've done a really good job on outlining administratively what to do and, and who might do it. But how to think out of that box and get everybody else to think out of that box? That's not so easy to figure out.
Right.
Well, I, I think, if I may, I think that there's, there is, as Matt noted, it, it's a fair point that a lot of these steps happen currently because we do have, or is the committee's populated with volunteers, for the most part, notwithstanding some vacancies. But this doesn't happen on everyone every time. And so does the cumulative effect of adding these steps, you know, create a burden? I think that's one of the things that we're going to have to assess during this trial period, if you will. You know, and I, I, and I hate to, I hate to be the guy that, that, you know, tries to manage expectations, but, you know, I don't know that it, there's a system that's going to be perfect where we're, we're never going to get caught off guard by a vacancy or run short of applicants for green cards. I mean, those are just kind of naturally occurring things in these processes. So I think one of, one of the things I think is the strength of this document is it does lay out the many steps that, that, you know, if we're wondering what to do next, we can just consult this and know what to do next. Uh, and I, I think that's a strength, but it may get to the point where, you know, we're spending inordinate amount of time, you know, processing stuff that, that, you know, maybe can be more efficient, but I don't think we'll know until we try. I mean, you know, Jeremy, I know, he, he was involved in, in helping draft some of this as well. And so I want to, you know, I don't want to speak for him either.
Jane?
Just one, one thing we can do, and I don't, I don't know whether it belongs in this outline or, or whether it just belongs in select board approaches. But I know that I will endeavor to make sure that I, when I do my liaison reports, I always remind everybody what, what openings there are on a committee that I'm reporting on. Or if there's a new appointment, or if there's expect, you know, an expectation of an opening. But again, this is just a, you know, this is something that we're doing every Monday. So this is a way of, of reminding everybody about that every Monday. And, and then I would also encourage anybody that's tuning in to think about that. Because if you're viewing our Zoom and you have an idea, if it's for yourself, obviously fill out a green card. But if it's for, if it's somebody else, then contact the liaison that's bringing up the opening. It's just, you know, as a select board member, that we can do that. We can be part of serving the community in that way.
Yeah, good point. I'd like to go to Jeremy next. Jeremy, do you have some additional comments you'd like to make on this? You are intimately involved with this process.
Sure. So I think what I communicated to Matt over email and when we met last, um, I think the document overall looks good. I mean, I, I, you know, share that there is definitely a lot of vagueness and like roles and responsibilities that, that people have noted because, because we never really written any of this down. So I think working out some of those kinks aside, this all looks very doable on my end.
Okay, thank you. I'm, I'm gonna, are there any other board comments? Because I would like to open it up to the public right now to give the Terry and Matt some additional feedback. If. Any additional comments from the public on this topic?
I wanted to note that I did get some feedback just suggesting.
Yeah, go, go ahead.
From the public, just suggesting that we somehow qualified just to represent the community to, you know, ensure that we got some representation of different viewpoints as well as backgrounds. And I, I just didn't know how to enshrine it in the document. And also just the sort of limitations of different viewpoints, what do we really mean by that? So I just wanted to note that I could get that input from the public.
So capture that and then for, on your to-do list.
Yeah, well, the discussion continues on how to do that, yeah.
Right. And I'm wondering if, Lynda, your statement, how you wordsmithed the library when the library was struggling with that same thing, you wrote up some good wording. That might fit in here.
Okay, I'll send that along for what it's worth and.
Consistency would be great. I think having the same wording would be fantastic if it helps.
Okay. All right. I think, I can't, Jeremy, can you see if anyone would like to comment? I don't see anyone who's stepping forward, so maybe if we stop sharing at this point. And, okay, let me just check one more time. Yeah, okay. Thank you both. We, we've given you enough to go back and do, I think, for, for round two.
Okay, great. And just one more really quick comment. I wanted to thank Jeremy for, I think, over the last few months, Jeremy, you have already been implementing some of this. And I have found it really helpful that I, I can see an improvement already. Like when there's an opening, I know about it sooner when there's people who've applied on green cards. I'm getting that from you. It's been extremely helpful. So, thank you.
Thanks. Glad to be useful.
All right. Thank you, everyone. So we'll, we'll expect to hear from you and maybe give you a couple more weeks. Do you think you need that?
We'll need to call another subcommittee meeting and then we'll come back. And hopefully we'll just review one last time and start working with it.
Terrific. Okay, thank you. All right, I think we're ready for committee, that was a helpful conversation, by the way, and you made that possible with the structure you provided for us. Committee nominations, I think we're ready for those.
Nominate Susan O'Shea Folger of 72 Shore Drive and Jeff Parker of 315 Plainfield Road to the White Pond Advisory Committee for a term to expire on April 30th, 2023.
Okay, and committee appointments?
Move to appoint Adrian Boardman of 110 Hillcrest Road to the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail Advisory Committee for a term to expire on April 30th, 2023.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, will the, a clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Escobedo?
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
And myself, Ms. Bates, aye.
Okay, and that's unanimous, and I so declare. Committee reappointments.
Move to reappoint James Burns of 1515 Main Street to the Concord Housing Development Corporation for a term to expire on April 30th, 2023.
Okay, a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Escobedo?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Myself, Ms. Bates, aye.
That's unanimous, and I so declare. And thank you to the volunteers who've stepped up for these committee rolls. Okay, committee liaison reports, who would like to go first? Uh, Susan?
Uh, my report is brief. On Tuesday night, I tuned into the Board of Registars meeting at nine o'clock on election night, and they were in pretty good shape. And as you probably saw, they reported the unofficial results were reported on the website on late Tuesday or early Wednesday, I'm not sure exactly which. So it was a very, it was a very smooth process. The other committee I attended was the cemetery committee on, on the fourth. And there have identified three plots in the old part of the cemetery, or three, a piece of land where they are planning to build three mausoleums. There's going to be a rate hearing at their next meeting in December, 12th to December 2nd. And they added a couple of things to their goals for this year. One is forestry management, taking a look at, you know, the tree replacement process and exploring a potential cull and barium. The other, other item that I wanted to note is the committee has drafted a letter that they're sending to the Trails Committee, the, the Transportation Advisory Committee, the Recreation Department and the Department of Natural Resources. And it's regarding what's been bubbling up. We've heard it a few times, and it's going to continue to do that. The Reformatory Branch Trail, which is, well, in the future, abut the paved trail in Bedford. And the point of the letter was that this is, there are a lot of voices to be heard in this decision, and they, they want to be able to be part of coming up with a consistent message and consistent rules about, about trail usage. The other thing I want to mention is this comes up every now and then, and it continues to happen, and it's, it's disturbing that there, it happened again last week during a funeral service. The funeral director, there's, people are sitting at the gravesite. The funeral director had put up signs saying that there was a funeral in progress. And people came through and were making very inappropriate remarks, kind of racing through. So, I don't know, I think that's, that's something that has to be considered because it's not a one, it hasn't happened just once. It has, it happens. And it's, I don't know if it's a lack of recognition, that's, this is a, this is a cemetery that's not, it's still used and there are active burials there on an ongoing basis, so it's.
Jane has a question, Susan.
Yeah. So were the people racing through engaging in athletics? Or were they busy going, you know, to go see a graveside? I mean, that's what I don't understand is where's, where, because that'll help us also increase our communications to.
I, I can't tell you the, where they were going. I've said that what was reported was that they, it was three or four bike bikers that drove by and one person yelled, oh, is this a wedding? And then it wasn't well received.
Okay, but that, but that at least gives us something to do. I mean, again, there are different avenues to inform biking populations than, than for instance, a group of tourists that were going to see the author's ridge.
Right, exactly. And it's often groups going through and somebody shouting, turn left, turn right, and not, just not being aware that this is a pretty, it's a sacred place. So, and that's my report.
Thank you. Who would like to go next? Jane?
Okay, I had three meetings. The Natural Resources Commission met on the fourth. And the primary areas of discussion were about, they, it's, it's an ongoing and now continued again, application for approval to construct a garage within the 100-foot buffer zone at 43 Old Bedford Road. This has been discussed multiple times. And it's clear that there is a difference of opinion between the applicant and the commission. The, the, their project manager is going to make one more attempt. So I think the next time we hear it, it'll be a decision one way or the other. There's the, a, also continuance of the FEN schools seasonal floating dock and how to, and also specifically to the NRC, how they can actually guarantee that the, the natural landscaping of, of, you know, riverfront area. natural landscaping of, of, you know, riverfront area and the bordering vegetated wetlands will be left undisturbed, especially during the critical habitat periods, which may not exactly align with when the students would be wanting to use the, you know, the canoe storage area and the docks themselves. And then, there was an interesting discussion with Middlesex School about the three new playing fields that they have proposed, all TV using Eco-Fill, which is another new, I guess relatively new and different artificial turf product from what we, you know, the crumb rubber that's been used at certainly the high school fields. It doesn't sound anything like the one, the fill we just heard discussed by Minuteman Tech, and this was also continued, clearly greater discussions. This is also part of these, this, the application would also raise the height of these fields boarding Lowell Road significantly. There was a new application at Park Lane, and, and then there was a, actually an unusual, but a potential enforcement order on, on something that's been done on Barnes Hill Road that, that has also been pushed forward because the, the, there was nobody there to discuss it with. And other than that, the Grantham Group, as in Junction Village, and our, and our proposed assisted living facility was extended, they received their extension request for DEP File 1371374. The process is just taking too long, and they were running up against the time limit of their first, of their first request. Second meetings are, and these two meetings I'm going to speak on together because they were really connected, one was the Commission on Disability, of which I'm now the liaison and, interestingly enough to me, so I will report on it, is the fact that as, according to the rules for the commission, as a liaison, I'm also a voting member, and that's never come up for me before as a liaison on a, on a commission or a committee. That being said, the main order of business was discussing the library parking concerns, and that being that they, the commission felt very, very strongly and, and made it clear at the next meeting I'll report on, that on-street parking was simply a, as far as they were concerned, an unacceptable option, and while meeting the bare minimum of the ADA requirements would not, in their minds, be safe or appropriate to current needs and uses, much less a increasingly aging population's needs and uses for, i.e., the duration and lifetime of the new building. So, we also went on to discuss parking at 136 Sudbury Road, which is a local dental office, which is not in compliance currently with the ADA. And then I went on to the Historic District Commission, of which the bulk of the meeting was engaged in a discussion of the Library Corporation's application, and, and at this meeting, the, the Chair of the, of the Commission on Disability made their, their concerns well-known. I had previously encouraged discussion between the two commission committees, I know that those discussions happened, and despite whatever understandings were established, the committee voted four to one to approve the, the application, including the on-street parking, handicap parking. I don't think we've heard the end of any of this, and I think there is a lot of concern that has not been met thus far. And with that, there were other issues discussed at both meetings, but they're not, you know, I don't think they rise to the same level of interest. I will also just update it all, at the request of our Chair and some others, I checked in with the State Ethics Commission on my being a liaison to the Transportation Committee, since my husband, Wally Johnston, is a member of that, the ethics, the attorney of the day found no, no, no reason, no violation, and I, and I just simply filed a disclosure with our town clerk, acknowledging that we were both, that I was a liaison, but as a liaison I have no voting interest, and neither Wally nor I have any, there's no financial benefit to any of this, so with that, I will end my liaison reports.
Good, thank you, Jane. Matt?
Yeah, just first, a question for Jane, on the Committee for, Commission for Disability, have they reviewed the proposed parking and disabled parking and, and path at White Pond?
I, having just joined them as their liaison, I really don't know, I think they are looking at it, I think they will be engaged, but I don't know, that's a good question.
I'd just be curious, especially given, you know, their response to the proposal at the library, that it seems like we should try to get an early read on their views there, if we haven't already.
And I will, I will engage Jane on that.
Okay.
Matt, if I can, I'm a high level of certainty that that has happened, and if it hasn't, I'm sure it will, Kate Hodges, who's obviously managing the White Pond effort, is also our disability, is also our disability coordinator.
Okay.
I, I agree that, that that's very likely, especially given the number of conversations, I'm also the White Pond liaison, and handicap access has been the main issue of contention in discussion, in terms of the abutters and neighbors' concerns about changing the landscape to accommodate, so.
Yeah, it's just, I think of the, the distance of the parking that's proposed up above and, you know, access versus like the objections that we heard about access to the library and the relative distance, and it just, like, compared to the library, this is going to be a lot further away.
I, just to paraphrase what was discussed at the Commission on Disability, it was not distance, it was room around a van on all sides to exit the, the vehicle in safety and get into the library.
Okay.
And I may have missed something, but that was my understanding predominantly.
Correct.
Okay, I'll move on to my liaison reports.
Wait, can I, can I just finish on this before you do that?
Sure.
Sorry, so, I was the liaison before on the Commission on Disabilities, and I think, Matt, that your point is correct, that, I'm not sure the whole commission has actually looked at the detailed plans that we saw at the White Pond Forum, and I think what happened with the library was, the commission was told, oh, you're going to have onsite parking, and so they loved it, but then later they found out the detailed drawings were different, and it's all, it's on-street parking. So I think it's important for Jane to go back and see if they're actually going to look at the drawings or the rendering that we saw at the White Pond Forum, and make sure that we don't have another disconnect like we did with the library.
That's what I, why I brought it up, yeah.
And the other thing, I have a question for Jane, you mentioned the Transportation Committee, and this kind of ties in with what Susan was saying, where we have a cemetery commission, and then we have some biking groups and Bruce Freeman Rail Trail Committee, and I'm wondering if the Transportation Committee is looking at some broad general transportation policy that could help us when we're trying to satisfy both the biking population and the people going to funerals? Has the Transportation Advisory Committee been able to look at any of these general policies?
We haven't, we didn't meet last week, and I think we have been focused largely thus far on specific, specific hot-button areas or areas of interest, but I, as liaison, I've certainly spoken to the need to sort of frame the purpose, the purposes behind the Transportation Committee, which, as one of the architects of the charge, we, and as, you know, historically, the initiative came from the Long Range Plan, and it was intended to tie transportation needs, both the, you know, last mile, first mile, last mile, as well as the interconnected impact of policies and process in Concord as a whole across committees, across sectors on transportation.
I, if I may, Jane, or Linda, I agree with that, I think we haven't yet, to be honest with you, this issue with the cemetery is fairly recent, Susan talked to me about it over the weekends, I've kind of first I'd heard of that, and, and there is a role for the Trails Committee here, Bedford is making changes to its side of the Reformatory Branch Trail, and I think that's going to prompt some conversation about our side of it, and so this is a much bigger picture, and I'm going to guess it's going to be something that's going to be talked about, you know, not in the, I mean, it'll be talked about in the short term, but it's not going to be a short-term solution, I think we're going to be talking about for a while, and there'll be multiple parties kind of involved, you know, I think that the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail, you know, one of the thoughts that I had in talking to a couple of those committee members is, should there really just be a multi-use trail committee, so the, the standards for multi-use trails are the same, whether it's Bruce Freeman or Reformatory Branch, or whatever? So there's a lot, and then I think that the Transportation Advisory Committee would then say, okay, well, if there are standards, what should those be? So the short answer is yes, but the longer answer is, it's a longer answer, and if, Linda, I'm sorry, can I go back to the parking spaces at the library for a minute? Just because I wanted to make sure I was clear on what I heard.
Okay, do that now and.
Yeah, so just, I think in terms of the parking, the, the original design was off-street, and then that didn't pass muster with the Historic District Commission, and I think that's why this is, this issue has come back up, it wasn't a, I think the, the design had changed by a regulatory process, not because of a change in the project. I just want to make sure that I, I heard that right.
Right, the, the problem is that there are two very, very opposing positions on handicap parking, and the position that was not voted through was the one held by the, the commission focused on disability issues.
Okay, if you need to talk about that further, I'll let you do that offline, Matt?
Yeah, so I had my first meeting with the Housing Authority, and Todd Benjamin is resigning from there, and then, you know, on the back of having Fatima Mezdad resigned due to her election to this school committee, and then expired terms, there are a lot of openings on the Housing Authority, and so this coming spring, of course, are the elected, but we also can, you know, get an appointed position there, so that, that's something to really be thinking about, because I think to fill that many Housing Authority positions could be a challenge. The other thing is that has probably previously been announced is the Executive Director is resigning, as well as her administrative assistant, so the primary town staff are also turning over, there is a, the, the committee, the authority discussed the timeline of the hire, so there is a subcommittee that is pursuing the hire of a new director, they expect selection to be in March and hopefully start April slash May, and the Executive Director has agreed to stay on until then, so I think we will have continuity, though there, there was discussion that the administrative assistant may switch before then, and there may be a need to bring these folks back for some independent contractor type of consulting, just because of systems and other things to orient the new executive director and staff, because they're, the budget by MACD regulations cannot, for salaries cannot increase by more than 3%, so if there's, you know, overlap, then that would, you know, impact the ability to, to have both people, so there are other ways to pay for it, but that's, it, it through independent contractor perhaps. The, the budget for the year was reviewed and approved, and then finally, there was concern expressed by the committee about the assessor's, I guess, sense about the classification of the tax treatment for federal units that were going to be moved into a single-member LLC, I think this is a process that's been contemplated for some time, and there were some questions about how the, these units would be taxed once that transfer would occur, and until that was resolved, they couldn't proceed, but I, I raised the question with Stephen, he said that recently he and Stephen and the town assessor had met, Attorney Macarius and, Mia Macarius and the town assessor had met, and they determined that, yes, the favorable tax treatment will be honored with the new structure, so I think that's good news, and they can proceed with the change, the re-characterization of those units. The NMI StarMet Committee met and reviewed its rough draft report, as a result of the, I think, very substantive discussion that the committee members had, there had been major structural changes proposed, the group's going to go back, each of the drafters is going to revise their section, and we expect to have a, a sort of more complete draft in early December, and I think, you know, with further tuning, that would be the draft that we would see as a select board, you know, and then there would be further discussion, public discussion and review and everything, and we'd try to approve this in the spring, sometime late spring probably. And then lastly, Magic didn't, is meeting this week, but I just wanted to note that upcoming on November 17th, there's a special event related to COVID called the Winter Placemaking Design Charrette, and the idea is to go through with members of the Economic Development Team to see how to activate public spaces in the wintertime, which of course is, I think, tough with the weather, and so they're going to do this design charrette on one or two sites in the subregion, and people can kind of see what winter friendly programming options might look like, so that's once again, November 17th from 9:00 to 10:30 a.m. And then, I'm just curious, and this is not a topic that, I was unable to attend the public ceremonies and, and celebrations committee meeting this week due to the overlap with the Housing Authority, but, you know, by town charter, the PCCC is responsible for our Patriots Day celebrations, among others, and I, I guess when we look at the much bigger celebration coming up for the 250th anniversary, we have this other committee that's been formed, and I just trying to understand the relative roles of these committees, especially since the PCCC is in the town charter with responsibility for this event, so I'm just looking for guidance, as the liaison is, things start to ramp up, the PCCC has talked about, for example, increasing our, our future parade budgets and things with, anticipating this, you know, coming on, but I, I guess trying to coordinate and trying to understand what's the, who's, who's in charge, what's the umbrella, that's, that's what I'm still trying to understand as a liaison.
You're, we're certainly going to, you're certainly going to hear more about that as we, I mentioned at the last meeting, we'll be talking about the town. as we, I mentioned at the last meeting, we'll be talking about the town, surrounding towns and and also the organizing committee that will have to be set up in Concord. And there's a role for everybody, I can just say, because previously there were 17 committees for the last big.
But were they subcommittees of the PCCC or?
No, they were subcommittees of a coordinating committee, but the PCP took care of the parades in a very specific set of responsibilities. So we can revisit all of that and and what has been done and what we want to do going forward.
Okay, thanks, because it wasn't clear to me.
Yeah, well, it's not clear to any of us at the moment, to tell you the truth. But there's a lot of work there to be done, no question about it. Okay, thank you. Who hasn't spoken? Terry?
Okay, so my report is very brief this week on the Capital Planning Task Force. Hugh Lauer, Citizen Large, is resigning, and we're looking for another Citizen Large. This is a short-term, important project that should we will be finished in the next six months. So we are looking for applicants for that. And Stephen mentioned in the beginning, the MBTA is going to be cutting commuter rail service, and they're having a series of Zoom meetings. And the one for it's called Forging Ahead. And the one for Concord is November 12th from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. That's this Thursday. And they want to get input from the public, and they want to inform riders about these cuts. So you go to MBTA.com/forgingahead. That's it for my report this week.
Okay, thank you. I attended the Tax Fairness Committee, and they were pleased to hear that the Home Rule petitions were up at the state and that Stephen and I had confirmed that, in fact, they've been received and are now part of the legislative process. And I think that's all I'll report on right now. So I think we're now ready for, sorry, I need to, miscellaneous correspondence is next? Sorry, miscellaneous correspondence. We did receive two additional or at least a couple additional correspondence regarding Nestor Woods. And that's all that I'm aware of at this point. Okay, any public comments? Diane, would you, Proctor?
Diane Proctor, 57 Sudbury Road. Thank you. Linda, I I have a question about the want to take us back to the parking issue.
Yes.
I wonder what the I just don't and maybe Stephen can explain this to us. I just don't know what the protocol is. Who has ultimate say over the library parking issues? Is it the Select Board? Is it the Historic District Commission? Is it the Library Corporation? Is it the is it the the police and the fire department in terms of their adjudication of what safety is on those roads? I just don't know how to I don't do whom to turn to understand how that adjudication gets determined. And I wonder if somebody could answer that. Thank you very much.
That's a good question. In the short run, I'll just comment that, you know, we first try to get the committees to speak to each other and work through any disagreements. And there are times when these issues then have to bubble up.
Linda, do you want me to take a pass at that? Just so I I think in terms of the the spaces that would be constructed as a part of the project, those that's a part of the design review that the HTC would do. In terms of the size and dimension and, you know, and, you know, certainly, police and fire would give feedback on where those spaces are located, which is why they weren't able to go on Sudbury Road, which was one of the early requests. So that they didn't go on Sudbury Road because of input from from police and fire, but the design of them would be regulated by the HTC. I think the dimensions and things like that would would then receive input. I don't believe the Disabilities Commission is a regulatory body. I think they're advisory.
Correct. So then ultimately, Stephen, who it's the HTC that is the determining body?
Insofar as there those spaces are a part of it, are a part of a larger project that was designed subject to design review by the HTC, yes.
Okay, so that once the HTC makes an adjudication, then that's the final determination, since they've taken into account other, you know, they've listened to the to the Disabilities Committee, et cetera?
They and and I don't want to speak for the disability. I don't want to speak for the Historic District Commission, but they're what they do is they issue a certificate of appropriateness.
Right.
So their evaluation is, is it appropriate with the design aesthetic of the Historic District? Not I I don't know if they've taken into consideration disabilities issues or not. I just know that their sole job is to look review designs based on appropriateness for the district.
Clearly, there are federal regulations as well that must be honored, but that's a separate matter.
And everybody acknowledged that the on-street parking does fall within the guidelines of federal regulation. Now, I don't know, you know, there's also the Planning Board and the and the zoning Board. I mean, there there are multiple entities here. This I was reporting on, the HTC and and the Commission on Disability.
Thank you, Jane. Many of us have been watching both committees and their deliberations. I just wondered how whether there is a final adjudicating body. And I it's really just a question. I just don't have any ideas.
I no doubt will think further about that.
Do you like it very much? And thank you.
Any other comments from the public? Okay, seeing none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Escobedo?
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
And myself, Ms. Bates, aye.
Thank you, everyone.
Bye.
Bye.